Yep.
We're going to call this meeting to order. Today's date is March 4th, 2024, and this is the Telsi City Common Council. If everybody could please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. All right, adoption of the agenda. We do have one addition. It's going to be under new business, and it's item G, the resolution to transfer assets to Telsi Electric Department, or T C E D, if you just want to abbreviate it. Resolution to transfer assets to Telsi Electric Department. If there are no other changes or additions to the agenda, I'm going to adjourn motion to approve them. Motion made by Mike. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda stands approved. Next item is presentation minutes for your approval. These are from your February 5th meeting. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes as presented? You should have a copy in your packet as well. If there are no changes, I'm going to adjourn motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Larry. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gerald. Any further discussion? Ain't none. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes stand approved. Next item is comments of citizens. If there are anything he says like to comment on that's not on the agenda, come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the minutes, please. All right. Move on to committee and ward reports. We'll start first with Larry Kleeman, Ward 1.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have several things to report on, but before I start on my regular report, I do have a question. I think it was a month or so ago, I appeared before the Board of Works and Public Safety to request consideration of putting up a stop sign at 7th and Humboldt Street, making that a four-way stop intersection. Has anything been done on that that you're aware of?
I will follow up with Chief and see what he says. I think that was at our last council meeting you did that, right? The February 5th one?
I think, no, I think I-
Or Board of Works.
I think I went to the Board of Works.
Yeah, February 5th, yeah. I think so too. I will make notes, follow up with Chief.
Larry, is that preemptive, or is it in response to accidents that have occurred?
As a constituent, I had contact me that has noticed that it's, and I've observed this as well, especially at night, that when you're on Humboldt Street, stopped at the stop sign there by the poorhouse, and you're wanting to make a left turn onto 7th Street, it's extremely difficult to see down 7th Street for oncoming traffic, especially if a car is parked in that last spot on the east side of 7th Street. And across the street at the hideaway, on the opposite side of Humboldt Street, there was a similar situation with parking, plus there are two trees planted in between the sidewalk and the curb. This time of year, it's not a problem, but when they bloom, and it causes a problem also, as far as, it's just difficult to make a safe turn in that intersection.
I think a lot of citizens like that street being void of any stop signs. You can, you know-
Speedway it down.
Stop lines, well-
Yeah, you can speed down.
If they do that, then they do that. Some people, a lot of people drive reasonably there.
But Mike, we also have-
And also on Mozart and 12th, there's a stop sign there, Mozart and 12th.
Light.
Some light there.
Stop light, yeah. By the farthest part. That's right by my office.
Okay, maybe it is the light. No, no, it's, maybe, I don't know, there's a bush there, a stop sign, and cars park, and it's difficult to get out and across without-
I know what you're talking about. It's difficult if you're trying to turn, you're like right on red with those bushes out in that meeting area can make it a challenge. That's probably what he's meaning on.
Is that what it is?
If you're going east.
I don't think a stop sign is going to make that much difference.
What's going to happen is, Mike, the police will go down there and they'll kind of have an unmarked car, or just a regular pedestrian car, and they'll kind of radar cars how fast they're going, first off.
It's going to be a four-way stop, is what Larry's asking.
Yeah, but they'll evaluate it that way, and then they'll also look at the amount of traffic cars that's going down 7th Street. They could recommend a four-way, they could recommend maybe the yellow curb line be painted further for visibility in those trees. That might be an option.
And I mentioned the extension of the old line, but I don't think, if that is done, then you're going to deprive, if you do it on both sides of Humboldt on 7th Street, you're going to deprive the poorhouse and the hideaway of one parking spot.
Yeah.
And the increase for the extension lines.
The other thing, Mike, that I mentioned is that, you know, since, and it's, I think, especially problematic at nights on busy weekends when the poorhouse has a lot going on down there. And the other thing that has happened over the years, and I think we've kind of lost track of it, we've got two apartment buildings across the street there, that there's no crosswalk for those people to cross 7th Street.
That we need to put the ADA ramp on the poorhouse corner. The other corners are good.
The other corners are good.
It's just that one. And Gerald has mentioned that last year, we just haven't gotten to it yet, but we will.
But, so I just think it's something we need to take a look at.
Yeah.
Because it was brought to my attention.
Just some time here report.
Ah, yeah.
Start thinking about what you're going to say. How about that?
I did want to thank the Park and Rec Department for reinstalling the new swing set down Sunset Park to replace the one that was damaged by a tree falling on it nine months ago or so. Been a while, but thank you, Brandon, for getting that done. On February 13th, I attended my first PCDC meeting, Perry County Development Corporation meeting. It was very informative. I'm glad I attended that. I received a comprehensive report. I'm not going to relay all that information to you, but one part of the report that I wanted to mention, because sometimes we don't see what's going on, because most of their work is done behind the scenes because of the confidential nature of it. But one program they reported on was the Make My Move Program, which is a worker attraction program, and it actually pays cash incentives for out-of-state residents who will relocate to Perry County. And I'm not quite sure when that program started, but since its inception, they've had 909 applicants, 241 of them have been pre-approved, 44 were offered the incentive, 15 have accepted, four actual households have relocated consisting of nine individuals. So there's been nine new people moved from some other state to Indiana, specifically to Perry County. And they continue to work on housing is a challenge as far as enough housing for people to move here. They continue to work on that, as well as attracting talent for employers in the area. So thank you for appointing me to that board, and I'll give you periodic reports on that. On February 15th, Brian and I attended a planning and zoning meeting, and the development plan was approved for Tom's Car Wash, which is going to be built up, the old Sonic Restaurant that has been demolished. I can't recall, Brian, when he said he was going to start construction.
I think he said it was going to be towards the last of April, wasn't it?
I can't recall. I remember him saying, though, his plan was to have it operational before the end of the year, so, but I'm glad that's moving forward. I participated in a DLGF webinar on the Gateway System, which gave me some good information as far as how to access various public reports that are published on the Gateway System. I assume, Mayor, you will report on this a little bit later, but I'm thrilled. The city has received the $500,000 Oprah Grant for demolition and clearance of the old hospital. That is in my ward, and I've had the opportunity to talk to a few people in the Finnhaven area, and they're absolutely, can't wait till that project gets started. On February 26th, I attended a Telsi Historical Meeting. Mike and Kathleen Finley provided a program on the 1907 flood. They had pictures that were taken from a gentleman that went up and down 7th Street and 6th Street and Main Street in a boat, taking pictures of the old buildings. It was a very interesting program. And I also, on February 29th, I watched the Solid Waste Meeting. Thank you, Mike and Mayor, for representing us in that meeting. That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Larry. Moving on, Ward 2, Mr. Brian Steen.
Just all I have is, I was with Larry in the Planning Commission. That was my first meeting, and I was really impressed on what has evolved in around town and can evolve around town. And so I hope to have some more input down the road on it. As far as my ward, I haven't had anything to report this time.
All right. Ward 3, Mr. Philip Simpson.
Hi there. I attended the Main Street Suite Stroll. It's a great little event. Mike was down there. It's just got people into, walking to all these little small businesses, and there was lots of good people helped put that on.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Ward 4, Mr. Mike Finley.
Thanks. I wanted to say, I'm for the four-way stop sign now, Larry, after the plug on our program. Go.
At least he makes the meetings entertaining, man. That's good. Got to have a laugh.
A little more on the Telsi Strong Street Stroll. 25 businesses participated on Main, including some dining, nine dining facilities where they come in and eat. The next gathering is the Mayor's Easter Egg Hunt on the 30th. It's always well-received. And then after that, they're working on a wine stroll at the poorhouse. The poorhouse is going to put it on for us. Also, the Easter Egg Hunt, National Honor Society Telsi is supplying all the components and labor. Chris tells me they've already assisted in the creation of the eggs.
We've got 30, or 2,300 eggs already done up that we had done up as a city already, but it'd be about 4,000 to 5,000 eggs.
Wow.
And they're all gone in like 45 seconds. I'm not kidding. But we still need an Easter bun. Philip?
In your actions, we voted for you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You didn't know that.
I think it has to be a member of that committee, doesn't it?
It could be anyone.
No.
Which is Philip.
They don't have a 5XL ride to it, Philip.
Is my face show, or do I get to cover my face?
You got to cover your face. You scared the kids out of it. I'll be able to laugh a little bit. That makes it fun.
One other thing I wanted to thank the Street Department for, the temporary paving on the, not paving, but pothole filling on the worst of the alleys. We know that we're holding off on the alleys until the streets are all completed, but they filled quite, in my area, on the north side, they've filled some of the worst potholes, and my constituents appreciate it, myself included. Thank you.
All right. And Councilman at large, Mr. Gerald Jaikle.
Last month, I reported I was working with Jim Holmes. He has delivered, I think, two or three alleys of Millings that homeowners requested. And I mentioned it at the Board of Works, the Ohio Valley Toing is doing an excellent job with the old A and G property. And that's all I got.
Okay. Any statements or comments from the city attorney?
Quick apology, gentlemen. I was not at the Plan Commission. Had a commitment with my daughter, who happened to be home unexpectedly, and Steve was kind enough to guide everybody through that development plan. I'm glad it went well. Aside from that, nothing else. We are, one other matter, we are very near finalizing all of the settlement documents in the GE matter. I'll be able to report a little bit more fully when we get to the finish line. Suffice it to say that a settlement out of federal court is complex. You have a settlement, and then it seems like you get to the, go to the drawing board to actually draw it up. It's been a chore. I'd rather watch someone make sausage.
Okay. Any statements or comments from the clerk treasurer?
I just want to let everyone know that I did complete the city's annual report to the State Board of Accounts. It was due February 29th, and I did get it in last week. And I have provided all the council members with showing what funds we have and their beginning balance and their ending balance for 2023, and have advised them if they have any questions, just stop in and see me, and I will try to answer their questions or find an answer for them.
All right. Thank you, Connie. All right. We'll move on to new business now, because we don't have anything to go. We'll just start first, the two-year-old outstanding warrant. So, counsel, you should have on your first page here. Do you want to explain, Connie, because we've got several new members here, what these warrants actually mean when it says Telsi Electric Waste Water, and a brief summary of it?
These are warrants that have not been cashed.
And what you mean by that is checks?
Checks, yes, that have not been cashed. And the state allows us to put those back in the fund that they were written out of after they're two years old. So we do this every year, and as it shows here, we, the city itself only had two in the general fund. Trash didn't have any, water didn't have any, wastewater had one, and then electric, as you can see, had a whole list of them. So the total of all the voided checks only-
Hope it ain't mine.
Oh, that's, oh, that's the total of theirs.
That $1,800 ones, I said, I hope that's not one of mine.
I don't, I'd have to look at the other report to see who it was.
Mobile deposit.
So we just need your approval on this, and then I will get forward this to the departments, and then they will void those checks and put them back in the correct fund.
Motion to approve. Motion made by Larry. Is there a second? Second by Brian. Any further discussion? Ain't none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, new business, item B, additional appropriations. This is the next document there, and you're stacked there. A lot of this, at the bottom, ARP, Coronavirus Local Physical Recovery Fund, is things that were still in progress, i.e. the website, the pool.
Years past.
Years past. Wendy Creek, we just signed a document with Midwest Engineers for that. Dog park, restrooms, Brandon's working on those. Beautification Committee, computer upgrade. Connie's just about think we're done with that. Sports complex and the van.
That was approved at the last council meeting.
Do we have to do an extra appropriation of that if it's already done?
Yeah, they only approved it. We still have to do the appropriation.
Think about that, sorry.
Yes.
And then, so Connie, I explained those. Do you want to explain the other ones, if you have any questions on them?
And the other ones, and I had sent a letter out to all councilmen and explained all of this, how this all worked, but the ones in the general fund and the Lowet Public Safety Fund are where we had to make some cuts, but after we approved the budget last year, I had to make some cuts. And this is starting to put some of those cuts back in the general fund, is what it, general fund, and then I'm moving a few things to the Lowet Public Safety because they can support those amounts.
So, counsel, do you have any questions on these?
I do have a quick question, just on Wendy Creek.
Yeah.
I think we had allocated some funds to Wendy Creek previously through ARP.
Correct.
Was that less than the $35,000 we're now?
We had used some of that, and I don't remember.
We used some of it for-
We used some of it, and there was like 10, I think there was like 10,000 left or something, 10,000 or 15,000. And so I just went ahead and did this for the amount that the contract is now.
That the Board of Works approved the contract.
That the Board of Works approved the contract for that 35. Now, I can go back in and put, we could do another additional appropriation for whatever amount was left, if the council would want to do that. I don't have that in, I might have it in front, either one.
That's okay. Second question, Mayor, on where is the, and I believe the Board of Works hired Midwestern Engineers, is that correct?
Yeah.
Where will the study start and stop?
Beginning to the end of Wendy Creek when it's outside city limits. So it won't, the study will not go outside city limits for Wendy Creek, because it continues on when you go out past-
Okay, specifically, Wendy Creek runs down Perry Parkway in front of my house, but it's in the county.
Well, yeah, okay.
I think, I'm not sure exactly where the city line is.
Well, it's kind of like, the creek almost divides the city right there, the way it is, I think, ish. Yeah. It's, they'll probably have that in there. I know it starts-
I hope they do, because there's some severe erosion up there, and trees, trees are being-
I will have them look at that area. I know we, as a city, don't really go up there and maintain that.
Yeah.
I know they don't mow it.
Well, there's no mowing to be done.
But the other half, once it starts getting more out into the, I guess, commercial district, that's where it starts getting more maintain-ish. But what will happen with that for the council that doesn't know, you know, what's going on here, that we hired Midwestern Engineers, they're going to go through and evaluate basically the health of Wendy Creek. And what I mean by that is, is there any corrections that need to be made for runoffs and slides, and how should we maintain it? Prioritize issues that may happen. Help us get to permits when it needs to be repaired, because that alone is a bunch of red tape that none of us could probably figure out in a short timeframe, but they can help us with that. They know exactly who to pick up and call.
My theory is, if something isn't done in that creek there on Perry Parkway that runs up through there, that eventually it's going to eat into the city street.
And it could. And, but, yeah. And overall maintenance plan two of it, which is also important. How often should you mow it? How tall should it be? What maybe equipment you should, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions?
I did find here that it was $19,437 that was left, at the end of the year, so.
All right. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Larry. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any further discussion? Ain't none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is item C, conflict of interest statements. Most of you, well, Brian would, Larry doesn't, Philip should, yeah, he does.
And Philip, I have one there for you to sign.
Yep.
You sign it on the back page, please.
You're good.
And then I will take that back then.
So basically, these are conflict of interest statements. Do you want me to read over who these, what these are, I can?
I don't remember how we, I-
Are you sure?
They all have a copy of it.
Okay. Will these be all put out and signed?
Yeah, they, yes, yes. I'm in the process. They should all be signed. And it just lists what business these people own that maybe would make it a conflict of interest if we, as a city, did something with that business.
Counselors, any questions regarding this?
No, this is filed with the Perry County Clerk and also the State Board of Accounts.
Correct, correct. It gets uploaded on the Gateway System, and I also email it to the county clerk.
If it's an order, I'll make a motion to accept the uniform conflict of interest exposure statements for 2024.
Motion made by Larry, second by Philip. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item D, interlocal agreement, animal shelter. You all should have gotten a copy of that. What questions do you have on this, if any, for the interlocal agreement?
I think this is the exact same interlocal agreement from, was it a year ago or two, I don't remember, it's annual or two months ago.
I want to say we're going on at least our third or fourth year, but-
No, this is just the second.
Well, I think we had them before, but we didn't pay any for it because they didn't have the shelter going. There was one year we didn't give any money to it, I thought.
Yeah, but I don't think we signed anything that year.
Oh, that was right. We just committed the funds. That's what it is.
We committed the funds and the budget, but we never signed anything, I think, is the way that was.
Have we been sending them money yet?
Yeah.
Not this year.
Not yet this year, but we did last year. This is just, this is in essence a renewal.
Yeah.
And it's for one year.
Mayor, I have a number, if it's an order, I have a number of questions.
Ask away. I'll do my best to answer them.
Okay. I've noticed that this agreement is between us and the county, and they're asking, the county is asking Telsi citizens to send in $35,000 to support the operation of the animal shelter. And the county, Perry County, puts in $35,000, and the city accountant puts in $5,000. My biggest concern about this is that as county taxpayers, we're already paying for the animal shelter, you know? It gets back to the same old story again. Telsi is part of the county, and we're paying county taxes. So in effect, they're asking city taxpayers to pay twice. That's my main concern. I have some additional concerns, though, with the, I looked up the agreement that the county has with the Rivers Edge Animal Shelter, Inc., which is the not-for-profit that actually operates the shelter. And they have a one-year agreement with them that says it'll be renewed for an additional year unless notice of termination is given by either party no later than December 1st of any year, which conflicts, one part of the agreement, I'm not sure who drew this up, Jeff, but one part of their agreement, that statement is made as term and effective date, and then item number 13 says, under termination, either party may terminate this agreement by giving the other party 30 days prior notice of intent to terminate. So it's a conflict of their own agreement. And again, I'm not an attorney, but that's the agreement that the county has with the animal shelter. Additionally, one of the provisions under this agreement, and again, it's between the county and Rivers Edge, said Rivers Edge is supposed to submit quarterly reports to the Animal Control Board, including, when available, total animal intake and animal release rate, animals died in care, and any other reasonable information requested by the Animal Control Board or county. I've never seen a report, and it doesn't say that that report comes to us, but I've never seen a report. What I have seen frequently on Facebook and other publications is requests for donations. And I know it's a not-for-profit corporation. I understand that. I used to run a not-for-profit corporation, but-
Find out on the Diet Star.
How do we know what, whether they in fact need the money? Do we even know if the county is sending their share, or are they just sending our share? I don't know. I've just got some concerns with it.
One thing, Jeff, and this is, Larry said something, I just kind of dawned on me. When you do, and this is nothing to few, because I know you didn't draft this agreement.
I didn't draw this up, yeah.
But many times we do agreements anymore, or maybe get any from the county, anybody, I think the attorney that drafts the agreement or drafted should put like a footnote, drafted by, so we're not guessing who drafted.
I do on mine, this agreement looks very familiar.
Maybe moving forward, anything, it would help answer questions if you had to go back. I don't know who drafted this either. I would assume it was done by maybe Chris, maybe years ago?
It might have been years ago. It looks very familiar.
But you know what assuming does, so.
Yeah, incorrect.
Just thought. So, counsel, Larry, I can't answer all your questions. I don't know the answer.
I see your point, though, Larry. I mean, if it's a not-for-profit, and they're asking for donations.
I have not researched this to see if they actually are a true 501(c). You can be a not-for- be a not-for-profit and not apply to IR, for IRS five oh one C three status.
I, I understand that. I, I just, I went into the Secretary of State's office, I couldn't find anything on that.
Did you check GuideStar? Well, you'd have to have access to log into GuideStar.
I did, I think I did check GuideStar.
Okay.
I'm not positive about that.
GuideStar is kind of, for those who are always aware, you check the status.
I couldn't find anything on that, but that's-
Okay. Well, I mean, really, the nonprofit part is more of a county issue that they're entering an agreement with than what we're entering. This agreement mainly is asking money for us to contribute that would go to them.
I understand that, Chris, but, but as I said earlier, we're part of the county.
Well, I agree. I'm not arguing that. I'm just talking about-
And do we need to pay double to support this operation? I have nothing to base that decision off.
Well, Connie, the money comes out of our general fund?
Correct. It's, but, it's a budget that the council approves each year that we approve, approve budgets.
Do you feel it'd be, and I know you don't know, but would you feel safe saying that the county's share probably comes out of their general fund also?
It used to, yes.
Which is also our general fund as far as Perry County residents live in TELCITY.
Yeah.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Just ask the ladies, so I understand too. Okay, so-
And I val, I value the service. I'm, I'm not questioning the service, but, but I, I don't even know-
We don't know what we get, though.
Who the board members are.
Yeah, I got you.
Well, you know one, on the, on the Animal Welfare Board is Charlie.
No, on, on Rivers Edge Animal Shelter.
Yeah, I, that I couldn't answer either. I don't know.
Me neither.
Um, I'm gonna make some notes, kind of mentally here, and I'll try to gather some information up on that. Um, let me write a few things down real quick before I do forget. So who is, um, okay.
Not-for-profit status.
What the count, what I might, well, I've got some ideas. Just look, check your emails this week. I'll try to get something together and I'll include you, all the council in them. And if they have questions, they can kind of fire them back individually to the Animal Welfare Board.
Hmm, okay.
Back and forth, you know, who's on this, who's on that. Just, I'll start getting kind of a thread going. And then, do you, I mean, I'm kind of understanding you kind of want to table this. Is that where I'm, is that what I'm hearing till you get answers for next month, maybe, and then you decide?
That would be my preference, Chris. And I, I have, you know, I, I really didn't raise a lot of questions last year because I, I think it was important to get it restarted and, and I, I have more understanding in helping something to get started than I do an ongoing operation, depending on what kind of income they have coming in.
Sure. No, I understand.
So.
So what, I'll do, council, between now and our next meeting, um, I'll get the email thread going where you can ask questions and therefore, and Rivers Edge, I'll see if I can't include Molly or whoever. She can send or they can send documents back and forth if you want to look at them.
Okay.
And I'll put it on the agenda for April.
Okay.
Okay? But before that, I do want a motion to table it until-
Make a motion to table this.
Uh, motion made by Brian. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Larry. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, next is item E, resolution to TELCITY Electric Department in lieu of, payment in lieu of taxes. Um, Connie or Jeff, I'm gonna make some notes before you're doing that real quick regarding the animal thing.
If you want me to take the lead on this, I can.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, so we had a meeting with Mr. Hicks, uh, the Electric Department. Um, for many years, the, the Electric Department paid, payment in lieu of taxes, the statutory substitute for property taxes that city departments pay. Um, as a matter of fact, the Electric Department is technically not subject to that. Um, TELCITY Electric Department could, if they so chose, tell us, too bad, uh, we're not paying those. Um, but TELCITY Depart, TELCITY Electric Department, rather than paying an actual payment in lieu of taxes, uh, since there is no statutory framework for that, um, is simply going to pay to the city of TELCITY a hundred thousand dollars that would fill the void that would otherwise exist if they were no longer paying any payment in lieu of taxes. So that, that's what this resolution does. Um, I've reviewed the statutes. I agree wholeheartedly that, um, that that is the case, that they would not be subject to that. So frankly, it's generosity on the part of the Electric Department. Um, I believe Andy has a similar resolution. Has your board already adopted a resolution or authorized?
They, they have.
Yeah.
With, with the approval, they're agreeing to hear you.
Yeah, so, so we simply need to adopt a resolution to accept that generous donation from the Electric Department and it would have the same net effect as a payment in lieu of taxes from the Electric Department.
If, if I could say, what's, what, what's driving this at our last audit, uh, they said that the next time we start having audits, that they would probably, they would look into lieu of taxes and we had to have a format for why we're paying it, what we're paying it. So they got, Connie and I are talking about looking into why. And Connie's looked, we've looked and, and looked and looked and looked, and so this is why this is coming up. So we just wanna make sure we're covered when we get on it, so while we're paying.
There's a justification for why the Electric Department made this payment. And so by adopting this resolution, we give them the justification and, and we get a hundred thousand dollars.
From now, every year.
Every year.
Yeah, it just won't be this year.
Yeah.
And that goes to the law department?
[laughing].
You would.
Good try.
You would.
That was excellent. Legal department.
All right. Uh, Connie, what's resolution number?
That is twenty twenty-four dash three.
Okay. Um, resolution twenty twenty-four dash three, a resolution authorizing the request for the voluntary payment from the TELCITY Electric Department as an alternative to payment in lieu of taxes. Whereas the Common Council of the City of TELCITY, Indiana, has traditionally accepted a payment in lieu of taxes from the TELCITY Electric Department pursuant to the tax valuation formula provided by the City of TELCITY and the State Board of Accounts. And whereas the City of TELCITY and the TELCITY Electric Department have acknowledged that the TELCITY Electric Department is not required to make such payment pursuant to provisions of Indiania Code eight, one, two dot, two dot two, dash twenty-two. And whereas, you've got some weird letters there.
Weird where at.
Uh, yeah, your R's off somewhere.
Weird.
Whereas the City of TELCITY, uh, and the TELCITY Electric Department have entered into an agreement hereby, the TELCITY Electric Department will make a voluntary payment of one hundred thousand dollars rather than, uh, make a payment in lieu of taxes. Now therefore be resolved by the Common Council of the City of TELCITY, that the TELCITY Electric Department shall hereby pay to the City of TELCITY the sum of one hundred thousand dollars as voluntary payment for the calendar of twenty twenty-three, which sum shall be deposited by the TELCITY Clerk Treasurer to the general fund. Be it further resolved that the, uh, TELCITY Clerk Treasurer is authorized to execute and deliver the appropriate voucher request payment for the voluntary payment from the TELCITY Electric Department passed and adopted by the TELC, by the Common Council of the City of TELCITY this blank day, a blank of twenty twenty-four. Chris, go, Mayor, I tested, Connie Aberger, Clerk Treasurer. Resolutions only require one reading. Is there a motion to approve?
This, this doesn't say annually. This says this year.
We'll have to do it every year. We'll do a resolution every year.
Oh, will we? Okay.
Yeah, we will.
You know that.
Probably should.
Okay.
All right, so we got a motion made by Mike. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brian. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. All right. Um, next item we have on here is Brandon Long with the ARP Fund. So Brandon?
Here's your chance, Brandon.
Do you have some requests regarding ARP funds?
So, I've been working with Connie for the last several weeks, months, I guess, about ARP funds and what we have left. It's been, one of the top things that citizens wanted to see is parks improvements. We've done several things, several things to do, one of which is a shelter house and remodel of the bathrooms out of Joe Schaefer Park. Um, sidebar from that, we, we started opening bathrooms today, so hopefully even in the next few days, all of them will be open. But the issue we're having out of Joe Schaefer bathroom right now is, if you guys are familiar with that, that type, it's the same as Roy Finn down in Sockville, it's where you have to walk into an area and then you open a door to go inside the bathroom itself. Uh, I have a lot of problems with feces when the doors are locked, or doors are locked. Uh, they're just letting their kids and teenagers and/or adults are just leaving feces right there. We shoveled up seven piles over last Friday. Uh, there's more out there today.
Good thing is we got cameras in some of these parks. We'll, we know who does it, so we'll have to share that later.
We have Sunset, which is a common area for, for urine, but not as much as feces.
Yeah, come on.
Is the common place for that. You get a little kid out there.
They'll be in talk to you.
They go to the bathroom instead of taking them to a gas station or something. They just go hide over in the corner. And they don't use the leaves that are laying around or anything, so it's kind of, kind of disturbing, but that's, the fact of the matter is it's happening and I wanna, I wanna not do that anywhere if I can help it. Uh, so one of the things we've been talking about is taking the bathroom doors that are on the east and west ends of the building, shifting those to the south side of the bathroom house itself, which is the long side of the building that faces the, the playground. I wanna make four unisex bathrooms instead of two, uh, bathrooms with partitions and things like that for a few reasons. One being that it's, it's gonna be a common thing in the future, probably in the near future, is bathrooms aren't gonna be gender specific, they're gonna be gender neutral. Uh, so I kinda wanna get ahead of the game if we're gonna do a remodel, I just wanna, I wanna meet it when we get there. Uh, so I've been looking at ways to do it and the best way we came up with is to have four unisex bathrooms. We can make the structure itself and place footers, foundations and all that, but everything else has to come out. Plumbing, flooring, the concrete's all cracked all the way around. It's trip hazards. We also wanna build a shelter house between the current bathrooms and the playground itself. And it's like twenty-two by forty, roughly. Well, that's the roof, but the, the post would be about eighteen, about twenty-two, I mean, I'm sorry, eighteen by thirty-six. But anyway, so if you take out the whole area, you get it concrete, uh, make it ADA accessible, there'd have to be a curb cut, which I'll, I'll do that later at the Board of Works. Put gutters on the building, have it ran into the street, uh, new picnic tables, some fans, uh, stonework on bathrooms. The bathrooms obviously have to be completely redone inside. All the metal would match from the bathrooms of the shelter house. Uh, all the posts would be wrapped and no exposed wood. There would be a metal ceiling inside the shelter house itself so birds can't sit up there and leave their feces all over the place. Uh, so we, we've got ideas and plans and quotes and, uh, and it's all broken up, so it's, I, I can't tell you what the total project is. I'm still waiting on a couple. Uh, but there is, I would like to put cameras up there. Uh, we do have a mechanical room in there already, uh, just like we do down Sunset. I think, uh, with the two hundred thousand dollars that we have invested out there so far, I think it'd be silly not to put cameras up. Uh, and I would, I would like to also, while we're putting in new doors, put the auto door locks, like we have the city hall, William TEL Center, Shergin Center, uh, so those doors can automatically be locked at eleven o'clock at night or whatever time we specify. The reason that is, is because when we have vandalism down at Sunset Park, which is where most of our vandalism in bathrooms happen, it, almost ninety-nine percent of the time happens between midnight and three a.m. So if we can lock the bathrooms automatically through the night, that would keep from having our police department have to go there, take the chain down, drive back, lock them up, which doesn't happen now, but, and, and they would have to go to seven parks to do that. So I, I think if, once we get in the process of remounting some of these bathrooms, I think we should at least entertain the idea of putting these auto locks on there so we can control them. That does entail the, um, internet fee, a monthly fee. Uh, it's like forty-five dollars a month with the, with the city discount, so we would have that for life, but, uh, the, the camera systems themselves don't have a monthly fee, so we would have to worry about that.
Hmm, no, the cameras do have a monthly fee. We use the Astro ones?
Astro. We have a monthly fee on Astro, cameras?
Thought we did.
I don't think we do.
Maybe I'm wrong.
Not in the parks that I'm aware of.
Okay. Maybe it's the door fob that I'm thinking of, but one of them there is.
The door fob.
Maybe I think of that. So we would actually have, if we have Wi-Fi there, that would give us the ability to have Wi-Fi actually in that park then.
Correct. At no additional cost. They could be on their own network.
Well, we, yeah, we'd have our TELCITY, whatever, may be out there if we could, okay.
Yeah, the door locks would be on the hidden networks. Nobody can hack it.
Sure.
I can't say nobody, but it'd be hard.
The Chinese, the people that are leaving presents on the floor probably aren't gonna hack it.
They're not.
I think Phillip did.
They might know who dedicated it out there on the ground.
Yeah. Okay, uh, so there'll be cam, cameras in that park, which is important.
Cameras, uh, uh, auto locks, remodel bathrooms.
The extra bathrooms. The good thing about that is more time than not, it's the women's that's getting used a lot, which that leaves other people waiting. It makes music, you actually have more options. Did you decide, or will the sink be actually in the bathroom or the sink's gonna be outside of the bathroom, or do you know yet?
It'll have to be inside because we need to have too much floor space on the outside.
Okay. Some of those you can actually, what I'm saying is some of you can actually put the, the hand sink outside of the bathroom and, and you know, and you could save room in it and also lets less to tear up.
Right.
Because it seems like they like to bust the sinks off the walls and flush roofing shingles down the moats. I don't know why, but that's what they like to do. And the good thing is, if anybody comes out, you just make sure they're washing their hands then.
Yeah.
And then you're touching the door lock that everybody-
Well, you're still touching the stall when anyone-
Did you wash your hands?
No, no.
I'm asking.
I'm a germaphobe.
Yeah, I got you.
We have stalls in our current bathrooms that you-
Here you can get out. It'll have, it has to have panics, but-
Well, they write stuff on them too.
No urinals. We have a problem with urinals running all the time, so I'm trying to get to a point where we're not replacing a bunch of stuff yearly and I don't have to worry about water bills going through the roof because we can bow and things like that.
Will one of those restrooms, though, be ADA?
All four of them will be ADA or required.
Oh, really? There's enough for any dude?
They're all gonna be the same size, three six foot, about eleven foot on the tier walls.
Oh, that's big enough.
Okay, well, that's, that's even better.
How much money is this proposal?
Four ninety-nine.
Oh, I'm not done.
Of course you're not.
You know that hundred grand?
Are you done with that?
Brandon, the restroom there.
Hang on, what?
Done with Joe Schaefer or?
Uh, almost.
Okay. Let me throw a question out. You haven't covered it, but we talked about this previously. Will the restrooms be all-weather restrooms so that we can leave them operable all year long?
We are looking into hopefully having one stall or one restroom open.
Okay.
For the year. And the other three will be winterized.
Okay.
That is something we're looking at, we're gonna figure out what, what kind of heating system we would have to have. It wouldn't be a, we wouldn't keep it to sixty-five or anything like that. It would probably be just enough to keep it freezing, but it'd be good enough that if they're in the park that they could use it. Yeah, that is on the radar, but I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna say it because I don't know what that cost entails and I didn't wanna be committed to it yet.
Okay. I, I, I think it would be really good if we could do that. That's one of the, one of the negative comments I've noticed a lot.
And it's probably why some are going outside the door.
Well.
Bathroom, yeah, because bathrooms-
There's a reason, I'm sure.
Probably, but-
It doesn't, it contributes, I'm sure.
Yeah, okay.
Gerald had a question, Brandon.
The restrooms that are there today, those, that was there when you started the remodeling, those?
Yeah, there's, I'm losing my-
When, when you tore the old park down and built a new one?
Yeah, they were there.
They were there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they're there.
The shelter, I thought, was gonna go on the other end, or it's gonna be a shelter? A picnic shelter in that park?
Originally, no. The, the original plan, when we started doing the, the layout, if you just pick up the whole playground right now and move it to east toward the basketball courts, I'm going the other way. You'd pick it up and move it away from the basketball court. So you go west. The shelter was gonna go parallel to the road right there. Uh, the layout was, the drawing that I sent to, the layout had a shelter house there that was like eighteen by thirty-two. It was gonna be right next to the roads and people could offload cakes and ice cream, whatever they had. But the problem was when they went out to lay it out, they didn't notice that the shelter was there. And on the drawing, they thought that the shelter was actually the, the current bathrooms that are there, so they laid it out too close. Well, the contractor was out there and dug where the states were and started all the dirt work, started setting playground equipment, and it was already in concrete before I went out there and saw it. So it's too late to move it, so now that's why we decided to move it between, which actually worked out better anyway.
On the other end, then, what we tore down, nothing's gonna go there.
No, that's green space right now. We, we've talked, Mayor and I have talked quite a few times about, uh, maybe one day in the, sometime in the future of doing walk trails and planting a bunch of trees and just making that a whole green space on that end of the park, or actually the rest of the park.
And there is still a small shelter house.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is still a shelter house.
Toward the middle, right.
Right.
And that still gets used quite a bit.
Oh, yeah.
And it's got a nice drive up to it.
We get a lot of people requesting to use those shelters for kids' birthday parties and stuff and family reunions. You'd be surprised how much it gets used, more than what you'd think, but, yeah, Brandon's kind of shared, my dream is at one point to see kind of a so many wide foot sidewalk around the whole block. The parents could let your kids play and they can actually walk the sidewalk, not out in the street. It's kind of like a little fitness trail or whatever, but that's expensive. That's not today. That's just on the plan.
Wishlist.
Do you want to kind of give a summary of what the cost is this park, or what, what, where do you want to go next with your discussion?
Well, the, the rest of the, I'll just go through everything that we're looking to do in our G T M out.
Okay.
So at the rest, for Joe Schaefer, we need some wear mats that go underneath the citizen's pants as well as the tower carousel. And then under a couple of swings, we robbed the mats from Sunset when that park was damaged in the storm. We need to replace those.
Can you explain some of these, I don't know if you all know, what is a wear mat?
The mats that go underneath the swings when the kids drag their feet, they don't rip the mulch, or get down the mulch all the way down to the weed barrier and then rip the weed barrier out, and then you've got a muddle there. So the wear mat just keeps it from.
I just want you to explain because some people may not know what that is, watching our video.
So anything that where kids' feet are, are moving quickly, it disperses your mulch.
Okay.
Yeah, kids nowadays don't swing in a muddle like we did when we were kids.
I actually had somebody ask me why we didn't just put the swings in the grass.
Nothing like a fall and their mom being mad.
Mulch, we, yearly, we need to buy mulch for the playgrounds to replace the stuff that gets taken off in the rain and whatever happens to it. The installation of the playground at JFK Pool that came from Kiwanis, so if you guys are aware, we sold Kiwanis Park to the high school. I'm not sure if that deed has actually been fully signed yet, but if not, it's in the process.
It's, it's been signed. It's been submitted to the auditor. I did not check today to see if it had been.
Recorded.
Yeah, we're waiting on the auditor, and I honestly don't know what the holdup is.
I think we already have to check the deposit, right, so.
Yes, we do. But we haven't taken it off our insurance or anything yet until we know that that deed is.
Yeah, I'll have to, I'll have to check the auditor tomorrow and see what, what the problem is.
It's in ours.
Well, if you have the deed already signed and everything, legally, it don't have to be recorded.
Legally, they own it.
So you could actually drop the insurance on it because it's in the name.
Legally, they own it.
The only time you record a deed is to show, to show ownership, so.
Chain of titles and nobody else tries to buy it.
You could.
Well, hopefully he'll find something tomorrow.
I'm sure.
How much were we even paying them?
How much what? Insurance?
Yeah, we're probably not paying that.
Well, it's kind of lumped into the whole wallet, wallet actually, yeah.
I couldn't tell you right off.
They broke it up for Franklin, and I think it was, I don't think, I think it was three hundred ninety-three dollars a year.
Yeah.
But the playground, so one of the stipulations when we sold Kiwanis from the school is that they required us to remove the playground. They went there, I guess, for insurance reasons. So we took it out. The swing, the monkey bars, and the jungle gym weren't up to code. We discarded those. But the actual playground structure was still in pretty good shape. It needed a little bit. It does need a racket placed. That's sixty bucks. Otherwise, it's in pretty decent shape. It's not new, but it's, it's reusable and it's safe. So I want to couple that with the new slides and swings that we put down at, at JFK Pool parking lot. There at the south end of the parking lot. I'd like to put this playground there and then finish the borders. That's, I mean, a nice one.
It's not transferred.
It's not been finished. Hold it up. And then we'll have a decent playground down there too. Then we, we have some small stuff, like a tennis court in that that needs replaced. I need to buy a windscreen for the pickleball courts. I hope you guys have been down there to play pickleball, but it's, it's very popular. If we had four more courts, they could be full also on days like today. The days like today, when it's somewhat windy, I probably didn't feel like it outside because it felt so good, but if you went down there, when I was down there working on bathrooms, you watch the pickleball, try to fly across the net, like a, basically a baseball player's curveball. So we need to get some windscreen up. Concrete pad for the basement of the old park's garage. The old, the old garage has, we've done a lot of work there. And a new driveway and all new lights. We've got a grant from the electric department to replace the light system, so we put LED lights in there.
Brandon, do you guys know where the old park's garage is? Some of you. Explain the number that's at.
Yeah, so the old garage is on technically Fourteenth Street, but it's really the alley behind Thirteenth, between Thirteenth and the Franklin's baseball field. That's where the park's apartment used to work out of before I was here.
I worked out of there.
Did you?
I worked summer help.
That was a long, that was a long time ago. Forty, fifty years ago.
Before baseball.
Me and Jimmy Toothman and my cousin.
Do you still use that building?
Well, the basement was unusable. It had, it had mud in it about this deep. There were a couple of Yazoo's that Jeff probably rode. But there was probably forty or fifty paint containers in there and a lot of, a lot of other junk. We cleaned the whole thing out. That's a concrete floor. It was in great shape. We cleaned all that out. Our doors were so rusted because of the drain, the water came straight down off the roof right onto these doors. They're metal doors. They're in such bad shape that you could, without exaggerating, put two fingers on it and just push through the door all the way. So we replaced those. What I'm getting at is we've done a lot of work there. It still needs a garage door, but outside the basement doors, which is where we plan on starting to put our mowers, so they're not, we keep them in a lean to right now. I'd rather have them out of sight. I mean, we have a hundred thousand dollars worth of lawn mowers. The keys are usually pretty universal. I'd hate for somebody to cut a three dollar padlock and end up with a hundred grand in mowers. So I'm going to keep them down there outside. Plus, it's a good place. We can take our side by side. We just pull up to the building, walk down, jump on our mowers. For down today, they're, they're right back there. They're not taking up floor space in our shop. And it's a good use of that building. The upstairs of the building is going to be used for pool chemicals and chemical, and material for the baseball fields. It's field dry conditioner, stuff like that, chalk. Our drags are in there, our aerator that goes on the tractor, and those kinds of things. So we're, we're utilizing the space really well. But the basement doors open straight out. There's a hillside there, and it's, like today, it's, it, it just needs work. You need to dig out the hillside a little bit. We did put some French drains in. We did put new gutters on. Basement doesn't get any water in it now. But it took a while to get there, so we're making a lot of improvements, but concrete patches basically just needs to be big enough so we don't run into spinning out while we're trying to get our mowers back inside on days where it might be damp.
So where do you keep your mowers now?
In the lean-to on the south end of our park garage.
There's nothing over by the old Little League park entrance you don't store in there?
Yeah, that's where I'm talking about.
Yeah.
In the lean-to on the south end of our garage. Doug built it out of stuff that he.
So you couldn't, if you, the top of this building, you couldn't put your mowers inside?
Top of what building?
Down by the, one, you're talking down by the baseball field, aren't you?
Yeah, but then I got to move my pool chemicals and all that.
Pool chemicals should be over at the pool.
They can't fit inside.
When he puts his mowers in the basement of this building, right? Going to.
The doors are not open far enough. Yeah, the pool chemicals, I mean, they're only going to be in there for a couple of months out of the year, but, yeah, we buy them in bulk because if we buy them in bulk, we want to get a discounted price.
Right.
And they hold them for the pricing from last year if you buy them in the fall. So if I'm in the fall of this year, I don't take delivery until February, the following year, but I still pay the last year's price.
Well, all, all those are in plastic buckets, aren't they?
They are, yeah. But they, they gas off. You don't want to leave them outside if you control it. And that's coming from the chemical. I'm not a chemist. But that's what they told me. Keep them in the, inside if you can. I can tell you that when, when the pool was closed, we had the chemicals sitting outside, and when I started, we had four pallets of chlorine, and we went through those four pallets faster than we went through one pallet of new.
Because they lost their content. We always stored them inside that room there.
No, they were sitting outside in the rain when I started them. But we do store a lot in that room, but we can't fit, we can fit a whole pallet in there, but I have, I don't know, six pallets, I think, and that, and that doesn't include all the acid, acid tanks. If I had a good way to get them from the basement, I would store them in the basement. But one, I can't get a forklift, even if I had a concrete drive all the way, I couldn't get a forklift through the doors in the basement to move pallets. And now I'm going to put them on a wagon. I'm not going to carry them down there, so.
No, that's too much lifting. So if you leave them there with a, you can borrow a forklift, truck the whole pallet over and restock?
Can, yeah. We have a tractor, we have our tractor as forklift.
Forks on it.
We might have to remove six or eight pallets off because.